Place flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If some of you would like to offer a prayer, that'd be great. If not, then I'm gonna call Mr. Pillar. Okay, we have an opportunity.
Good bother your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we pray that you watch over the activities of tonight's meeting, that our decisions can be pleasing to you. Lord, we pray that you watch over our country as we continue to see unrest on a day-to-day basis, that you can intervene and you can provide peace for those who are suffering. We just thank and praise you for the beautiful weather that you are giving us, and that we can all enjoy it. Your blessing. Your name is great. Amen.
Amen. Okay, reading and approval of the minutes from May eighteenth, please.
Motion to approve and suspend the reading.
Motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Pillar. Discussion. All in favor of the approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, I'll go over the agenda. Any changes or additions to the agenda? Okay, bring down. Except for motion to approve. Motion by Pillar, second by Stern. Discussion. All in favor of approving this agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, five A. Jared, you're up.
Okay, I do not have much to the meeting. Um, we recycled the engineering report from the last meeting. We spent about a half hour talking about um, engineering projects last time. Um, just briefly then, so the water tank, we had approved during the toilet point. I think they were out there today.
Yes.
Boring. The last I heard, they were supposed to be doing that. So they were gonna take three boring. Wanted them to. I should hopefully have that geotech report, or at least a good idea of an update for next round. Any questions related to the water tank?
No.
No? Okay, all right, well. No build, no approval, just an update on that. Um, I think otherwise, it just been involved a little bit helping with expedition states, closing out the street job, and other small miscellaneous matters. Any, uh, Jerry, I intend to just keep on the line and provide support, but I didn't have much to talk about.
No, that's fine. I appreciate that.
Okay.
You ready?
I'm gonna put myself like loose there, stay on the line.
Yeah, anybody have any questions? For Jared? Um, you mentioned expedition of states. I know Tim Williams called me today. He'll be here Wednesday. So if anyone wants to meet, um, I'm gonna meet down here at City Hall, I think, possibly um, one, one thirty, or about here back, maybe I'm out of time. Okay, might we need to talk about any streets?
Well, we should, uh, as you saw in the notes, I didn't let Elena know that we would give them at least an idea if we were proceeding with that project that is, that is basically slated for two thousand and twenty-three. As I also told you in the notes, there are some reserve funds in the highway distribution fund that we could tap into. There are also some reserves under the general fund, should we need to tap into them to make it up the difference, the hundred and sixty-some thousand dollar difference from when we originally looked at the project compared to what they awarded. And again, this is two, two thousand and twenty-three likely construction. So, I guess, however you wish to proceed, I will let her know.
What are your guys' thoughts?
Well, I guess, you know, if we're gonna have to boot the three hundred forty-four thousand dollars. I think we got a lot of other projects that we need to do first. You know, I mean, I, I maybe would, maybe what I guess like to make the project, maybe, maybe attempted, I guess, uh, I don't know, I guess, smaller, you know, so that we fall into that ninety-ten.
I know Monty and I did look at, um, trying to cut back some areas, um, possibly part of the path, which doesn't really eat into that amount a whole lot.
That's, that's the challenge. The, the things that we would maybe wanna do away with doesn't amount to the dollars. It's, it's the underpass that's. You know, and you, you made a note in our last meeting that even, even at three hundred and some thousand dollars, the expense for, for getting that tunnel along underneath the highway, that it's likely we're not gonna get much cheaper than that. Is there, if we're doing this in two thousand and twenty-three, is there any way that financially we can set aside money in the, in the couple of years up to that, so it, it, it doesn't feel like we're taking as big of a hit in that particular fiscal year?
We, yeah, we could try and funnel some of the excess dollars into those reserves, uh, to take some of that steam out. If there are excess dollars.
You know, I think the lighting, lighting would be nice, and it would be somewhat of a safety issue. But not as much as a safety issue is this underpass ready for pedestrians. Um, we're gonna start seeing sand truck traffic, um, increase a lot. And, well, that's, that's one of those deals where it's, I think, boy, we're never gonna be able to do this on our own dime, you know, even if. I would love to find a way to make it work, but you're right, Casey, it's expensive. And we have a lot of other projects that, um, well, we're just gonna have a lot of other expenses in general.
I think if you ask the general population, I think they would really want this underpass. And we'd be, probably be willing to pay for it. You know, 'cause they're, 'cause that's who's gonna be paying for it, is everybody living in town. You know? I think it's unnecessary, I really do, the underpass.
You know, I know. I know, I guess, others in town tell me not to spend the money on that. And then, so anyway, I told them, well, I mean, this is gonna be like a ninety-ten, you know? So then they said, okay, that's fine, well, but it's not gonna be a ninety-ten split, so.
Now, maybe I heard Jared wrong when we were talking about it, though, if we, if we brought down some of the scope, the, the ratio still stays the same? Or, or is there, or is there a trigger point? That's what it sounds like, that you get to a certain dollar amount and it becomes a ninety-ten?
Yeah.
Kind of my impression from the correspondence with Elena DOT was this is what they're willing to give. Now, whether we go back on the scope, is that gonna change that percentage? It didn't really sound that way in, in my.
That's the way I interpret her language, yeah. So I don't know if you had seen something in writing that gave you that idea?
I just went off our last, I guess.
Conversation?
Meeting there, yeah. You know, where it made it sound like they're gonna give us this.
Yeah.
No matter what.
Dollar belly, yeah.
Do you know roughly what the ratio is with this?
About eighty-one percent.
Eighty-one nineteen, yes.
Yeah. Somewhere in that area, yeah.
You know, I would hate to beg it for nine percent difference.
I, I think it's a huge chunk of money difference if you did it all in one year, but if we were able to take a bite each year and just kinda stick that in the, in the coffee can, so to speak, maybe that would be a little bit more manageable.
Well, is this something that we could take a ten-year loan on and pay back, Monty? Is that, is that a?
It's possible under the Bank of North Dakota infrastructure laws, that there would be the ability to do that, but then again, then you're paying interest on, you know, on top of it, which is, yeah, it's minimal at two percent, but it's still interest you're paying over ten years would add up on, you know, two hundred thousand dollars. I, I kinda like Dan's idea. We earmark certain funds and they go there January one, and they're not to be touched, but maybe everybody's gonna have to get a really tight note then.
We're used to tightening.
Might be.
Quite a bit.
Yeah.
For the next several years. I, I personally like to see it go forward. If I, I'll make a motion that, that we proceed with the idea of earmarking portions of money over the course of the next three years, so it's not a substantial hit on the single year's budget.
Here we have a motion by Pillar.
I'll second.
Second by Wolf. Discussion.
Sorry, you're, don't we have to have a motion on if we're gonna proceed first before we decide to earmark money, or?
I thought.
Oh, it wasn't, you're, it was included in the motion to proceed, okay. 'Cause I'm like, it's nice to earmark the money, but we haven't decided if we're going ahead with it yet.
Move forward, but with the idea that, that the city's portion of it would be spread over the next three years.
Motion and second, more discussion, Casey?
You know, I guess, you know, I guess, after we purchase, you know, fire truck, you know, we gotta pay on that, and in the cold, then I guess money isn't gonna be there as much. Where are we gonna get this extra from, I guess? You know, the budget, it was already.
Yeah, I was, I was looking at the highlighted categories there that, that Monty had. We hadn't really discussed those particular categories being pertinent to the, to the fire truck, but maybe more so for projects of this sort.
And sales tax dollars, use that.
Can use that, yeah.
I, I'm just convinced all, all it takes is one casualty or one, one accident of sorts at that intersection. With, with my new work schedule right now, um, I have more opportunity during the day to be going across that highway, and it just amazes me how much traffic is, is going, and if you start moving that sand, I think you're just gonna raise the odds of something bad happening.
Here we have a motion and a second, any more discussion?
Well, I guess, if anything else, if the funds aren't coming together and it gets closer to that point, we'd be stuck with the engineering.
Right.
Not the entire project.
Yeah, we're not, we're not a hundred percent committed, as, as she said in her letter, until later on, and then, and then it was, the consequence would be any engineering that was performed, we would be held responsible for that engineering, engineering expense. So if we did find ourselves really getting into a pickle, we would, we would have an escape clause, so to speak.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Roll call.
Pillar.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Hack. Oh, he's not here. Stern.
No.
Over and over.
Aye. Let's carry. All right, we moved on to eight A. If that was mine, uh, family and me are gonna sell, uh, sell, I guess, fireworks, um, out of our building over by over by Jimmy's over there, so maybe sell them for, uh, for, I guess, generous, uh, generous, Jerry's.
A motion to accept the application?
Second. So my question is, has the fire chief checked this out? And they, I mean, do we, did he have to check it out to make sure that everything's kosher?
Yeah, and that's, that's what I talked about in my notes, if you make your motion contingent upon review and approval by the fire.
Okay.
By the fire chief.
Okay, yeah, that was part of my motion.
Okay.
Motion by Pillar, second by Wolf. Discussion. Roll call.
Pillar.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Over and over.
Aye.
Since business.
Great, yeah, you would just have to make a, make a note that abstaining due to the conflict.
You bet. Okay, good luck. Very nervous. I, I know you are. Eight B, WRT. Concrete work.
So this, this is the bill for the project that's been completed now?
Yes.
And then, uh, the city pays for it, but then we would assess it?
No, well, we can either do it that way, or we just don't take part at all.
Okay. So is, is this just because we had this discussion early on, so we're just seeing what the end product is?
Yes. I guess there is still a decision on your part, if you're participating, if you're paying any part, if you're assessing it, if you're just. I mean, realistically, it's a sidewalk. It's the property owner's responsibility.
Has WRT put any sort of formal request to the city with regard to it?
No, as I, as I said in the notes, there was just a brief discussion a couple of years ago.
Yep. It looks great. I've seen people work there.
It is nice. Actually, James Saylor talked about doing that.
Doing this.
Backside of the building.
Oh, yeah, that's what he, kind of sounded like, that's what he wanted to do.
Right. I don't know what our responsibility is.
I just say, nice job.
Basically, under our ordinance, the sidewalks are the responsibility of the property owner, so.
So basically, our decision is if we want them just to pay it, or if we pay it and we assess it back to them, giving them the opportunity to pay it in the next twenty. Seventeen thousand dollars, it's, is that a large chunk of change? I don't know.
I, I mean, you've got a six-point-eight million dollar project going on, this.
It's, it's a lot of money for us. I say, I say, nice job.
Okay, I'll correspond with him if they want for the formal request in for some portion. We can always review it.
Absolutely. Eight C, Tom Rene Schwab, wanna hook up the Southwest Water?
I was contacted by Renee. They are considering connecting to Southwest Water. And when they contacted Southwest Water, they were told they needed a letter from the city stating that they had no intentions, or that it was, I shouldn't say that we have no intentions, that it was acceptable to us for them to connect to Southwest Water, based on some action that was approved in the late two thousand and thirteen, the city did amend part of their ordinance to allow alternative water sources. Um, the biggest question is, how do you wanna proceed on it, because the ordinance does allow for charging a fee for not hooking up, and they won't be using sewer, so we don't really need to know how much quantity they're using. I know the previous one, we did not charge any fees that we approved, so I guess it's just a matter of.
They currently have a well on a septic?
Yes.
Okay. But according to our rules, in fifteen years, then, we'll be having this conversation about them rolling over then and tying it to the city.
Either that or extending this.
Oh. Okay, I'm gonna see that caveat in there that you could extend. Okay.
Well, we have it in here. Are we going to allow them to renew it for one additional fifteen-year period?
I see, okay.
And depending on city expansion, on.
Right.
Maybe move plenty.
I don't know much, you will do.
Do we have any motion to approve this, or just?
Yeah, 'cause it is under our ordinance, so, yeah.
So.
We have a motion by Wolf to approve the alternative water source application.
Second, second by Stern. Discussion.
As far as conditions, uh, for the fifteen years, can they renew it?
I'd say yes.
I'd say yes.
Okay. Uh, are we billing for the first fifteen year? Would I always review that if you want, in fifteen years too?
There's really nothing to bill them for. If, if they were tying into the, into the sewer, then yeah, we'd wanna put a flow meter on there.
Okay.
And bill accordingly, but I don't.
They already get billed for trash, right?
Correct.
Right.
Yeah. No, I wouldn't have them.
Okay, I guess that's the only thing that we needed to clarify then.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Conditions have been discussed. Roll call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Over and over.
Aye, motion, Jerry. All right, water sewer.
Hey, Dave shared with us a nice picture of the new garbage truck, and noted that it's on its way to Bismarck for a little bit of transportation damage to be repaired on their dime. And then, uh, that buys us a little bit of time for Monty to get all his ducks in a row, and insurance and licensing and everything like that, so. We'll have, we'll have a very, very nice garbage truck shortly here, too. Gather our people's refuse. That's all I got for this time.
Did we have any more issues over the hill residents, by the senics, with the, the car wash and sewer?
Um, we've been sucking it out, remember, but it's been, it's, it's better than it was.
They put that screen back in over there at the, at the service station, is that correct?
Well, they took a screen out and put a solid plate in, 'cause that one pit wasn't supposed to get water into it.
Right, okay.
It used to be like an oval as well, and that did help, but there's still an issue.
Sure.
But not near what it was.
Do we know if Paul's gonna try to do something more permanent after?
Haven't talked to him lately.
Would you stop by the visiting farm, just see what, find it, for it to be Paul, and then freeze up, and then redo again, and it's just. He knows it needs to be done.
Yeah, he knows something's made down.
See, exactly.
When the first visitor looked at him, I think he said he was gonna wait till closer to Paul, and he was gonna do something for you. I left this somewhere, car wash, he was.
Sure.
But I'll verify that with him.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, streets guys, not here?
I did have the one comment, uh, about the cemetery policy that we're working on, so as we develop that law, we're going to adoption.
Yeah. I was gonna ask Dave if he had anything, but he just, I just closed. Okay, fine, that's awesome. Probably they say it this time.
Are you alone?
I, I might be lucky.
I know you did.
All right, please fire.
Um, I noticed that they are still working on o- ordinance and zoning violations, um, a lot of it's mowing of the lawns, so, um, letters have been sent, yeah, so we're still keeping up on top of that.
So in addition to putting a note on the door to some of these residents, there is, there is mailings that are going to the owners as well? Okay. And what, what is the consequence on, on this period, it's because I've got a whole stretch of condos up on Divide Street that I don't have, but I see them daily, and, uh, do we get to the point where, where we mow it and then backbill them?
Yes.
It's around what, around, yeah. So it was not mowed by six-eight? Then we can, there are another.
Some of them have been done since I took the pictures.
I, I know the end unit, which isn't rods, that one, that one got taken. You know, all the other ones are.
Yeah, yeah, if it's not done by the date that we put on, then we do it when they're charged a hundred dollars per man, or.
So then are we still moving forward with, uh, ordinances where they have to clean their yard? Like one property, uh, with the BMW and the boats?
Yeah.
Have they gotten a summons, or?
They didn't get a summons. Actually, the BMW was removed from the property.
Okay.
So that one's basically taken care of unless they.
About the boats, yeah, we can't do anything about them.
And where, where are the vehicles being towed to now?
Uh, actually, right now, most of them have been signed over to someone else to take them out of town, and then.
You know, I noticed more and more vehicles getting in the line or at the fire department, so I didn't know if those were donations, or or were they, have they been part of that exercise, do you know?
Not that I know of. I, I have no idea why there's some of the vehicles.
They had actually started to accumulate some for training, and then with the pandemic, they weren't allowed to do the training, so they're actually looking at moving them out to our piles out there.
And I asked a question about the towing, because there's, there's one on the street down, down where I live, that has a blue placard on there that says, if not moved by such and such a date, it will be towed, so I was just curious where we are towing them.
Yeah, they're, either go up to the landfill, or if we can, we'll put the veteran ones behind us.
Okay, I knew we had talked about the landfill before, that that was going to be okay. Okay, thank you.
And that's all I know?
Thank you. Buster, HCD, you there?
Uh, I don't have anything, I'll make it stop.
Thank you, sir. And, uh, under my report, just that I'm meeting with Tim Williams on Wednesday. So we'll see how that goes, what his thoughts and comments are about the expedition states, and Monty, does he know any more about that?
I know.
They have their attorney, lawyers up there, or?
I know there was a one call today for them to dig the test pit up there this week, so.
Okay. David, any about streets?
Uh, we're busy mowing, bent out spraying weeds, uh, weed whacking, so we're just gonna stay on top of that, and.
Well, that stuff up by Delaware General is thick.
Yes, that stuff for, those little rain that we had, it's mowing really quick, and it's nice and heavy, so.
Yeah, right. All right, down at twelve A, Arbor Day. So, uh, Mike would like to do a an event for tree giveaway. And we need our support if we wanna do that or not.
'Cause the discussion was to start later in the afternoon, so that those that are working would still have a chance to try and pick up some trees that day then as well.
Sure.
It's a Wednesday, I believe.
Are we gonna ask people to be socially respectable with their distancing and?
Yeah, yeah.
Right, and, and we can see the proclamation. Do we have any issues with that, and would that would go forward and use this information for? We need a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Pillar. Discussion. Roll call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Over and over.
Aye, motion carries. All right. I miss anything? Remove bill. Vote to approve the bills. Get motion by Stern to approve the bills.
Second.
Second by Wolf. Discussion. Roll call.
Stern.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Hiller.
Aye.
Hold an hour.
Aye. Motion carried. Meeting adjourned, thank you, folks.